It being 7:30, almost, I'll call this annual town meeting to order. I apologize for that. We scheduled the special a little early and I kinda went through it a little too fast, I think, so... But anyways, welcome to the 211th Annual Town Meeting for North Brookfield. Let's give us a hand. We've managed to last this long and do a good job.
(APPLAUSE).
Okay, so Article 2, "To hear and act upon the reports of the selectmen and town officials and boards or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to hear and act upon the reports of the selectmen and town officials and boards.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 3, "To see if the town will vote to print and the reports of the selectmen and town officials and boards for the year 2023 or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to print the reports of the selectmen and town officials and boards for the year 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Anything to be said? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 4, "To see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of elected officials or all elected officials and appointed officials of the town and determine the sums of money or what sums of money will be raised, appropriated, borrowed, or transferred in the treasury to defray the charges and expenses of the town for a 12-month period beginning July 1, 2023, including a reserve fund under the control of the Finance Committee or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone action on this article to June 2, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said? (LAUGHING) I almost got you, Ron. Anything to be said? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 5, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer a sum of money to operate the water department for a 12-month period beginning July 1, 2023, under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-F and 1/2, or take any actions relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone action on this article to June 2, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 6, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer a sum of money to operate the sewer department for a 12-month period beginning July 1, 2023, under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section F, or, excuse me, 53-F and 1/2, or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone action on this article to June 2, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 7, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept gifts, bequests, and donations of money in real personal property given to the town or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept gifts, bequests, and donations of money in real and personal property given to the town.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. Okay, we have one opposition? Motion carries. Article 9, "To see if the vote will..." Oh, excuse me. Yeah, we're Article 9, okay. "See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and expend funds that may be available for state and federal grants or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
I just did eight.
No, you did seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, terribly. (LAUGHING) All right, let's do, uh, let's do eight. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any and all necessary lease agreements or other dispositions of personal and real property or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any and all necessary lease agreements and other dispositions of personal property.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now Article 9. (LAUGHING) "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and expend funds that may be available from state and federal grants or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and expend funds that may be available from state and federal grants.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 10, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Water Commissioners to apply for and expend funds that may be available from state and federal grants or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Water Commissioners to apply for and expend funds that may be available from state and federal grants.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 11, "To see if the town will vote to give the town treasurer the authority to invest town funds, general cash, water enterprise funds, and sewer enterprise funds in short-term investments as the treasurer deems prudent for income purposes or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to give the town treasurer the authority to invest town funds, general cash, water enterprise funds, and sewer enterprise funds in short-term investments as the treasurer deems prudent for income purposes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 12, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and transfer titles in the name of the town of North Brookfield in any properties or lands obtained through legally acquired tax title foreclosures or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell and transfer titles in the name of, in the name of the town of North Brookfield to any properties or lands obtained through legally acquired tax title foreclosures.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 13, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and 1/2, to establish the following fiscal year 23 spending limits for revolving accounts listed in Chapter 2, Section 17 of the North Brookfield Bylaws as follows: Counsel on Aging: $15,000; Counsel on Aging Senior Wheels: $7,000; Fire Training Center: $7,500; Planning Board Engineering Services: $8,000; Cemetery Department: $15,000; Board of Health Public Health Services: $5,000; Board of Health Vacant Properties: $25,000; Board of Health Trash Bags: $35,000; Building Permits: $10,000; Electrical Permits: $10,000; Plumbing and Gas Permits: $10,000; Safety Inspections: $5,000 or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 53-E 1 1/2, to establish the following fiscal year 24 spending limits for revolving funds listed in Chapter 2, Section 17 of the North Brookfield Bylaws as follows: Counsel on Aging: $15,000; Counsel on Aging Senior Wheels: $7,000; Fire Training: $7,000, Fire Training Center, excuse me, $7,500; Planning Board Engineering Services: $8,000; Cemetery Department: $15,000; Board of Health Public Health Services: $5,000; Board of Health Vacant Properties: $25,000; Board of Health Trash Bags: $35,000; Excuse me, Building Permits: $10,000; Electrical Permits: $10,000; Plumbing and Gas Permits: $10,000; and Safety Inspections: $5,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 14, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the North Brookfield Emergency Squad for the payment of contracted services or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to postpone action on this article to June 2, 2023.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Madam Moderator?
Why?
Jason, why?
Because that's when we move all the money items to for the next year.
Okay. Anything else to be said? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Article 15, "To see if the town will vote to accept a sum of money as the town's appointment, apportionment, rather, of fiscal year 24, Chapter 90 funds or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept a sum of $307,654.81 as the town's apportionment of fiscal year 24, Chapter 90 funds.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Okay, Article 16, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 344 and 53-E and 1/2, to establish the following fiscal year 24 spending limit for the storage unit revolving account of $10,000 and further to add the following text to the Chapter 2, Section 1, or, excuse me, 17-F of the General Bylaws authorizing revolving funds, or take any action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-E and 1/2, to establish the following fiscal year 24 spending limit for the storage unit revolving account $10,000 and further to add the following text to Chapter 2, Section 17-F of the General Bylaws authorizing revolving funds: 65 Donovan Road Storage Units, Board of Selectmen, payments received for lease of storage units, upkeep and maintenance of storage units.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Anything to be said on this motion? Anything at all? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Article 16, "To see if the town will vote..."
Did that one?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, wait a second here. Oh, no, that was pretty much unanimous. We're okay, never mind. Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation as set forth below, provided however..."
No?
17.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yep, that was the 17.
The two. I got the copy with the 217s, didn't I? Okay. So now we're on to 18.
17.
17, all right. Mine had two 17s on it. You can come look after the meeting if you don't believe me. (LAUGHING). All right, 17, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass., or, provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expended for all purposes allowing by law, including those outlined in an applicable opioid litigation settlement document, a document prepared by Substance Abuse Bureau of Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department entitled 'Abatement Strategies' and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowing uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Section 5B, and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town, and further to transfer from available funds a sum of money equal to that received, to be received by the town from opioid litigation settlements resulting from the town's participation in the National Opioid Multi-District Litigation into said opioid settlement stabilization fund or take any action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expended for all purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement document, a document prepared by the Substance Abuse Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department entitled 'Abatement Strategies', and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Section 5B, and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there anything to be said on this motion? Yep, one, her first and you, okay? Go ahead, Laurie.
Laurie Ryle, 107 Old East Brookfield Road. I'm just curious why the last part of the original article was not included with the motion?
Because we can't transfer the funds for that until the fall, so that will be included in the fall.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. Well, gentlemen, back here before you, Sue, hang on. Gentlemen had a question. Please come to the mic and identify yourself.
Jack McClintock, Summit Terrace. I'm ignorant of the legislation. I was wondering if there were enough time, if people were comfortable, giving a more detailed explanation of where this legislation comes from, what its intention is.
Can the selectmen speak to this, or do I need to?
Sure, so I don't, I can't speak to every specific detail, but basically, there have been, at this point now, five, I believe, seven separate lawsuit settlements. They were settled by the state with pharmaceutical companies who were opioid manufacturers. And the money, it's a class action suit, and the money received by the state through those actions is then being distributed to communities in the town, in the, in the state. And each town had to opt in to receive that settlement money. So, it's, uh, it's, off the top of my head, I want to say it's around $250,000 over the next seven years or so, coming from a number of different settlements.
Sue, go ahead, identify yourself and...
Sue Lewandowski, 2 Air Street. Who will be setting up programming or distributing this money or doing anything about how it's going to be spent in the town of North Brookfield?
So the selectmen and the Board of Health will probably work on that together.
Okay, anything else to be said? Anything at all? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bear with me just a second. That numbering thing really derailed me. (LAUGHING) All right, Article 18, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation as set forth below, provided however that the General Court may make clerical and editorial changes to the, of form only to the bill, use, unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provide further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve an amendment which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition, an act authorizing the town of North Brookfield to continue the employment of Fire Chief Joseph Holloway and Deputy Chief Darren Anderson. Be it enacted by the state, or, excuse me, by the Senate and the House of Representatives and the General Court assembled and made by the, by the authority of the same as follows: Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, Joseph Holloway, Chief of the Fire Department of the Town of North Brookfield, and Darren Anderson, Deputy Chief of the Fire Department of the Town of North Brookfield, may continue to serve in such a position until the date of their retirement, or until the date they are relieved of their duties by the Board of Selectmen of the town, whichever comes first. Provided however that Joseph Holloway and Darren Anderson are mentally and physically capable of performing the essential duties of the office, and provide further that the Board of Selectmen of the town may, at its own expense, require Joseph Holloway and Darren Anderson to examine, or be examined, by an impartial physician designated by the Board of, by the Board to determine such capability. Section 2, this act shall take effect upon the passage or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation as set forth below, provided however that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendment which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition, an act authorizing the town of North Brookfield to continue the employment of Fire Chief Joseph Holloway and Captain David Martin, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows: Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, Joseph Holloway, Chief of the Fire Department and Town, Chief of the Fire Department of the Town of North Brookfield, and David Martin, Captain of the Fire Department of the Town of North Brookfield, may continue to serve in such position until the date of their retirement, or until the date that they are relieved of their duties by the Board of Selectmen of the town, whichever occurs first. Provided however that Joseph Holloway and David Martin are mentally and physically capable of performing the essential duties of the office, and provided further that the Board of Selectmen of the town may, at its own expense, require that Joseph Holloway and David Martin be examined by an impartial physician designated by the Board to determine such capability. Section 2, this act shall take effect upon its passion, passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there anything to be said on this motion?
Thank you, Joe Holloway, Fire Chief, and Dave Martin, one of my captains. Just so people understand this rule, this is basically office work in the fire service at the age of 65. The fire service likes to know that their firefighters are still in decent shape to do the job. This, this is called the home rule, so if you adopt that tonight for us, then it'll go to the Senate to be stamped and approved, and we can continue to the age of 70. I personally want to work a few more years and complete the projects I have and the grants that I have written with my staff. I will let you know that we both have our physicals. We have completed them. We have copies of our physicals. Myself with the state, I'm deemed to wear a SCARD Airpack breathing apparatus with turnout gear for up to eight hours a day. I've been cleared through the state. So, as though I don't look that thin, I'm still in good shape. (LAUGHING) We love serving the town of North Brookfield. Hardwick accepted this rule a few years ago. The chief up there is 70 years old this year. We have firefighters that are 80 years old in a lot of local departments and well over 65. And what we found in the call service is that a lot of the experience, like myself, with younger call guys coming in and out of the station, we were losing that experience and we weren't be able to transfer it. So the whole home rule was adopted, and that's what this is all about. I would love to keep serving the town of North Brookfield for a few more years. I have very capable staff coming up behind me, Darren Anderson. That was a, that was a mishap on the typo. Darren, he's not as old as I am. (LAUGHING) Dave and I are at the same rate. So, that's kind of where it's at. I've got a lot of things in the fire to try to complete the project for you all folks with the staff to get that situation all nice down there. And we have a lot of training to do, and I've got over 40 years of experience in fires. I've been chasing fires since I was 16, 17. I think a lot of people know that. And I want to make sure I share that off with my, my staff, and they're well-prepared for the job. So, my goal is to go a few more years and get the station done, make sure the staff is where it is. We are up to, close to 30 members that we're trying to hold tight, but there's a lot of them that need a lot of training still. And we lose a lot of our firefighters to different jobs because there's more money everywhere than we get them trained. So it's a constant battle, as you know. But, I believe my firefighters will stand behind me any day of the week. And as you can see, we're, we're a lot busier than we used to be. That's why we went on a car fire tonight. We just didn't want to make sure there was no exposures to it. So the guys did a great job getting all knocked down. So, that's why we're here today. I hope you support us. I've spent my life in North Brookfield, and if I wasn't healthy, I would tell you so. And we have the documentation with the Board of Selectmen and from the state that we're good to go. And we get physicals every year and we'll maintain it. That's really what it's all about. They just want to be sure people at our age are still good to do the job. And we try to sit back more now and let, do the command operations and stuff. So, thank you very much. Dave, do you want to say anything? You also? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Is there anything else to be said? Anything at all? All right. I'm sorry. Yes, Michelle. Please tell them who you are. I know who you are, but (LAUGHING).
Michelle Thayer, 25 Winter Street. I just want clarification on what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. Is it just to give them permission to go and get these physicals?
No, this is just permission to carry on their employment past the age of 65.
Okay.
Right now, they, the way the law reads, at 65, they need to retire. And, but if we pass this home rule, they can go on to the age of 70 with the appropriate physicals and, and...
Okay, so it's, the state says, once you hit this age, you have to get permission from the town?
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that correct, Joe?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And then it'll go to the Senate to be stamped.
Right.
Okay, at any, but at any point, they could just say no? So it's still like, you're getting permission from the town, but you still...
If we weren't, if we weren't doing so, that's what the selectmen can terminate us at that point.
Okay.
Yep.
But we do have our physicals up before this meeting, so we're set for these conversations.
Okay. And, second question, can we do a ballot vote for this, or does it have to be hand vote?
You'll need to put that in a form of a motion and have a second.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to make a ballot vote.
Okay, is there a second? You seconding Ann? Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Ann. All those in favor of a ballot vote, please raise your hand. All those not in favor of a ballot vote, please raise your hand. Okay, that does not pass. All right, so we're doing a standard vote, but, no, this doesn't require 2/3s, it's a straight-up vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. You're gonna be around for a while, Joe.
Thank you, I hope so.
(LAUGHING) That must be Sue. That must be Sue. Article 19. Has everyone read Article 19 or the paperwork associated with the bylaw for the zoning change? Yes, everybody has read it. Would you be objectionable to me passing over reading that and just initiating the article by its title?
Yeah, please do.
Okay. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to amend the North Brookfield zoning bylaws, Section 4, by adding a new Section J or taking action relative thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the North Brookfield zoning bylaws, Section 4, by adding a new Section J as written in the article, and further move to amend the bylaw by replacing the word "performance" in second line of 8A to reclamation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. King, does the planning board have a report on this?
And there were two members of the public present. Those were particular people that do own gravel pits and do have experience with the issue, and there was no people not in favor of this article.
Okay. Anything else to be said on that in general?
Yes, I guess on a different topic, if I may have the floor. I would like to mention the work of planning board members and other town community members regarding our master plan and our open space and recreation plan. These two documents are now available at the town library for public review and usefulness and education. And so I would like to compliment our members of the master plan committee, those being John Turner, Ann Hicks, Sheila Orsi, Bob Locatelli, Brandon Avery, and Sue Lyons for their excellent work in doing this project. And I would like to say that we're very proud that the budget for this was less than $8,000. In most towns that do master planning and open spaces planning, they have a budget exceeding $25,000. So I'd like to compliment the cost-saving and the excellent expertise of our membership doing the project.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Is there anything else to be said on this motion? Yes, sir. If you could identify yourself.
Patrick Kurtzey, 3 Edna Circle. This is a long motion, so I didn't get a chance to read it before. What's the gist of it? We're changing the zoning laws for... Is there like a gist for what we're doing?
Mr. King, can you enlighten him?
Yes. Mainly, this is the earth... The earth removal bylaw was actually under the auspices of the Conservation Commission since 1993. They really have not had any... There hasn't been any really new requests for it, but also the board is really not in the... Maybe for choice of words, not in the mood to implement this bylaw, and we felt it would be more practical to have it part of our zoning bylaw. It's only going to apply to new operations, and we did add the... Some of the article speaks to filling, earth filling, and so this is something that we've added to the earth removal that was previously in existence under conservation. And so we think we now have a more complete bylaw, and we have a very active planning board in town that wishes to carry on the implementation.
So the planning board's behind this?
Excuse me?
The planning board wants this?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. Yes, sir. Please step up and identify yourself.
Jamie Floman, Water Department Superintendent. I'm just asking, does this pertain to town entities and departments as well needing to obtain permits and whatnot for excavation purposes? Is there anywhere that actually specifically says that in this?
Yes.
Okay. Didn't get a chance to read it. I just wanted to make sure.
And I'm sorry. I'm not up to speed either. But...
As I recall, in the summary, it covered work practice, Jamie, like if you have to excavate for a trench or a new line or something of that nature. It's covered under that, under...
Highway, water, sewer, cemetery are all examples.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Anything else to be said? Anything at all? All right. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, so we're going to vote it backwards. All right. Those that are not in favor of implementing this bylaw, please raise your hand. Those that are in favor of implementing this bylaw, please raise your hand. Great. Thank you. It's unanimous. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, but that's not on our agenda. Well, but you, being a former moderator, know I can't deviate from my agenda. I have to stay with the articles. I can't deviate to do that. If Mr. Ryle would be willing, after we adjourn, and would like to give a presentation, that would be fine, but I can't deviate from my articles. We don't have anything on the agenda about the regionalization. I apologize, but... Okay. All right. Let's see. We have the 22? 20. Bear with me, folks. There it is. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to restore mail-in voting as an option for all future municipal elections or taking action relative thereto." I might add, before we move with this in the motion, that this is a non-binding vote. The Selectmen... I'm going to read Town Council comments on this, which are... This is a citizen's petition. Oh, am I on the right one? Okay. Yep. It is a citizen's petition, so it must be on the warrant and may apply to be voted. However, General Law Chapter 44, Section 25B provides for early voting by mail, but also states, "Provided, however, that the Select Board or Board of Selectmen, Town Council and City Council of each city and town may, after a public hearing and by recorded and public vote, not less than 45 days prior to the date of the preliminary or election, opt out of the provisions of this subsection in any regular or special municipal preliminary or municipal election. The statute provides for the Board of Selectmen to make this decision, and the vote of the town meeting cannot override that. Therefore, this is only a non-binding resolution." So basically, this vote will give your opinion of how you feel about the early voting, but it will not be binding on the Selectmen to change anything. If they want to change it, you'll need to lobby them to do it. All right. So we're at Article 20. Again, the town to seek to vote to restore the mail-in voting as an option for all future municipal elections or taking action relative thereto. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
If you have the motion to make, yes, please. Please identify yourself and... Right there at the microphone. Oh, you're bringing it up.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. I bring this motion, first of all, Doug Borowski, 53, South Main Street. I bring this motion, first of all, because to me, it was really important that we have the vote of more than two people deciding a change, a substantial change, in the way that we are able to vote. As we stand tonight, we are one of three cities and towns in the Commonwealth...
Doug, you need to make the motion first, then you can talk about the motion itself.
Okay. So I make the motion to restore mail-in voting as an option for all future municipal elections or taking action relative thereto.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a second by Mr. Kurtzey. All right. Go ahead with your presentation now.
I'm going to be very brief, less than a minute. So first of all, if it's a change in the way that we vote, I think it's important that many of us tonight express our opinion. And truly, it doesn't matter to me which way we vote, but just that we vote, because the bedrock of our democracy is voting. And to me, it should be more about expanding the way we vote rather than contracting it. And there's been some talk about the cost of it. Well, the next warrant article we're going to entertain is also about how we vote, and it deals with clicker voting at these meetings, and just the batteries for those devices, I understand, would cost about $600 per year. So there's always a cost involved. And at the Selectmen's meeting, it was mentioned that the cost of mail-in voting to the town is roughly $337, even though nobody really has a precise handle on that number. So just as a general idea to get a sense of the town, should we become like the other 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth and allow mail-in voting as an option in our town? That's all this motion is about. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else to be said? Anything at all? No comments? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay. Those opposed? Okay. I'm going to need to try this again. All right. Let's vote it backwards this time. It's too close. So those that are not in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right. Those are in favor. Oh, okay. Okay. Those that are in favor of it, please raise your hand. The I's got it. I'm still not positive of this. Well, the tellers come forward. We're going to ballot vote this. I can't make a representation by the hands. You have a yellow band on your arm. Please show it to the tellers when you come up to vote. Otherwise, you can't have a ballot. Okay? We're going to do a ballot vote. You'll come down this aisle here. Your vote goes in the wooden box. Your discard, or the vote you don't want, goes in the yellow bag.
Could have had fun with that. I shouldn't have had to go all the way.
I'll get to next meeting.
I'll bring to my old hometown of Washington.
Spent 10 years there. Worked right downtown, yeah. In all our cities.
Too stupid. Oh, sorry. Now, I have to read mine.
Yes, you do.
Okay. No, this is to change the bylaw.
So what article's yours? You're 21, right? 21? That's you?
So I make the motion?
Yes, you do.
I hope someone's seconded. And then do I read the way the bylaw will read?
You'll read that as part of the motion. Make a motion to amend the bylaw to read. To read, and then read that shake. But I would, in the discussion part, just clarify. How are things with the January clause, et cetera, in order to do our things? If I can't take any part in it?
I know. Okay. Are you picking on my nose?
That's a discard. Yep. Yep, there was that one, and the lady...
Two up, huh?
Well, that's a cancel vote, so...
Okay. Huh? Not now, no. Okay.
Put the ballot box back down, because we may have another one.
So... Okay. The results of the vote are 34 yes, 42 no. The motion does not pass. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Chapter 2, Section 11, to include electronic voting by adding the text underlined and boldened and as follows or take any action relative thereto."
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaws, Chapter 2, Section 11, to include electronic voting or take any action relative thereto, changing the bylaw to...
dramatically. But, again, so it's a moot point, is this thing... Yes, sir?
I don't know if the motion has been rescinded entirely, but it just occurred to me that adding this language to the bylaw doesn't hurt anything.
That's true. He does make a good point. If we want to move forward at some point with other funding, would you like to reinstate your motion?
Can I reinstate my motion?
Yes, you can. Is there a second to her reinstated motion? Okay, yes, we have that. All right. The reason for the bylaw change is, the way the bylaws are currently written, we have no other options other than a hand vote or a paper ballot. And so if we were to adopt an electronic voting system, this would give us the option to do that, and then we could substitute it for a paper ballot or for a hand vote, depending on the situation. The way I had envisioned it probably happening was, is these would be issued as you came in and registered for the meeting, and at the end of the night, you come back and drop it in a box on your way out. But it would give you a personal vote, it would give you an independent vote, and it would have the privacy of the ballot box that we have with a paper ballot now. So, but we still need to have that language in the bylaws to do that. So, is there anything else to be said?
What are we voting?
We are voting to change the bylaws to allow for an alternate voting method in this particular thing, an electronic clicker. Okay? Anything else to be said? Yep?
Union Street, Tashina. I just, I personally fear technology not being as accurate as a hand count and stuff. Is there, like, any research really done? I mean, I, only electronic voting I am aware of is in, you know, the Democratic primaries. And I, there was a lot of things that went wrong, there was a lot of things that I felt like were not calculated correctly, so I am personally nervous. Do we know any of the statistics on the, this type of voting and how accurate it is? And if there's any way that it can be corrupted or altered, or mistakes that can be made, and stuff like that? Because like, I mean, I think that our voting system works great for our town, and I just wouldn't know why we would change it.
Okay. I do know that this is a system that the State House uses, the Senate and the House, to do their daily votes. So it is deemed accurate and by the Attorney General's Office and by the Secretary of State and everything to be used. So that's the best I can do for you, Tashina. I don't pass that, I don't know.
It's the same thing as, like, electronic voting on your phone. It would be different language, right?
It's a closed circuit.
Yeah, there's...
No packing.
Sorry, just asking.
Yep, no, that's good. Anything else to be said? Okay, to change the bylaw will require two-thirds, so we're going to vote it backwards. Those that are not in favor of altering the bylaws to allow for electronic voting, please raise your hand. Those that are in favor of modifying the bylaws, okay, the motion carries. All right, thank you. Let's see, that was, so we're up to 22, right? Article 22, I'm just going to read the very beginning of this, and just so we know what the article is, and then I'll request the motion. To see if the town will vote to adopt a resolution in support of the new flag and seal for the Commonwealth or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mine was next, I'm sorry. So I make a motion to move that the town vote to adopt this resolution in support of changing the flag and seal of Massachusetts as printed in the warrant.
Yes, we do need a written copy of the motion. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Okay, Sue Lewandowski. Okay, is there anything to be said on this motion? Madam Moderator?
Why would we do this?
Okay. Tashina?
I would say, so, sorry, if I did, there is a flyer that's going out, but as you can see, our flag is, well, you know, it's a little outdated, and the images are really, unfortunately, images of oppression for the Native American people. You know, I'll let him explain a little bit more about, you know, other towns who have already passed this and changed this, the seal. But the sword is the, I actually am horrible with names, so I cannot remember it, but, huh? The Man Standis Sword, which is very well-known for scalping of Native American people. And then right under it, you obviously have a Native American person, a very stereotypical Native person, and just the symbolism and its oppression and stuff has been there for a long, a long time. And I just, I wrote a little bit of something, so, and this isn't a new ask for the Native Americans, they've been asking for this change for over 50 years. It took about 32 years to get the state to set up a commission on thinking about changing the flag, and it's been about another 15 years about them, you know, vote, you know, bringing it and then not really voting on it, and it not really going anywhere. But there's been enough harm done, and it's time to make a change. And I'm hoping that North Brookfield will, you know, make a stand to move in a direction that can bring us more together as a community. And these symbols really do make a difference in how we view Native American people. And we have an opportunity here to make a positive change that can really heal the larger community of the state. They've been a symbol of oppression for long enough. And the voices are there, the research of how harmful it is to especially our Native American youth is there, the research is there, the voices are there, and it's really just time that we've listened. And I really hope that North Brookfield will make a stance on this, on being on the right side of history, because, you know, the towns have overwhelmingly voted in favor and supported in making this stance and supporting the change. And it will happen, it's a matter, because it's just not appropriate, it's not a representative, a representation of the natives of Massachusetts, it's not a representation of most citizens of Massachusetts at all. So it just needs to change. So it's just really whether or not, what side of history North Brookfield wants to be on, and I'm really hoping that you will take a stand with us and tell the state that we are standing together and changing the state seal and flag, and we will be on the right side of history. So, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else to be said? Please identify yourself at the microphone.
Well, can we have David speak, because he's been taking care of this throughout the state.
Okay, now, he's not a member of our town voting population, but if you would like him to speak, those that would like him to speak, please raise your hand. Okay. Those opposed? All right, if you could, please identify yourself, so everybody knows who you are.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. My name's David Detmold, and I've come over from Montague to support Tashina in this motion. And I know it's late on a Friday night, and probably everybody's got something better to do, and so I'll try to be very brief. But as Tashina said, many other cities and towns, including last summer, Berry and Sturbridge added to the number, 63 cities and towns have already voted to support this change for the reasons that Tashina so eloquently laid out. This is a very old symbol. In fact, it's changed many times in its rendering since the Puritans brought it over in 1620. We've had other seals, we've had other flags, and this is the first time in 140 years that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has taken the time to really review their state symbol to see if it meets the 21st century ideals of peace and justice and equality for the increasingly diverse population of the Commonwealth. And Governor Baker, former Republican Governor Baker, listening to so many cities and towns who have waited on this, appointed a bipartisan special commission in January of 2021 to take a look at this. And on that commission, and this is historic, for the first time in 400 years, indigenous leaders of the Commonwealth have been invited to sit with Republican legislators and Democrats to study this symbol, its history, and they looked at it, and as many of you may know, last year, that commission, 19 members, both parties, and six leaders who are indigenous leaders of the Commonwealth unanimously voted in favor of a total revision of the flag and seal to make sure it meets the highest ideals and aspirations of the Commonwealth. And so we're in the midst of this historic review, and, you know, other cities and towns have stepped forward and said, we would like to see this changed for the reasons that Tashina so eloquently expressed. And we very much hope that you'll find it in your hearts tonight, to join that growing list of cities and towns, to come up with a symbol that we can feel proud of, we all love the Commonwealth, and that we can feel proud to teach our children in grade school. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to be said? Yes, ma'am. Well, right behind you, and then you, okay? Step up to the mic and identify yourself.
Tonya Matthews, 53, Grove Street. Can you tell, has there been any work on what the next flag would be?
So, yes, the commission has just recently been granted an extension on their timeline until November of this year. They've got a little bit of money, finally, to conduct public polling to ask you and every other citizen in the Commonwealth what you'd like to see. But some of the, I think, very beautiful ideas that have come forward already from the special commission include natural elements like the cranberry, the cod, the shape of Cape Cod, the outline of Mount Greylock, named after an indigenous leader, the tallest point in the state. The white pine tree has been suggested, because that's of deep significance to the Wampanoag as part of their creation story. And the chickadee has also been mentioned. So we can imagine what a beautiful new flag would look like. The state of Utah just changed theirs about three weeks ago, Mississippi changed their flag, and 19 other states are in the midst of a review right now, and we're among them. And it touches every single city and town in the Commonwealth, so your vote tonight on this really matters. Thank you.
Mr. McClintock.
I'm Clintock, Summit Terrace. I want to say to you, to your face, sir, I reject this bald attempt to rewrite and varnish history that I cherish. I oppose your movement, and I think of it as frivolous and self-indulgent. Thank you for listening.
Well, I thank you for your comment, and I respect your comment, and I would say only one thing in response, that unfortunately, we cannot change our history, but we can change the future of our relations with all the people of the Commonwealth going forward.
Great. Thank you for your patience, so, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sam Biagetti, 27 Prospect Street, and some of you here may know me, I've lived here about seven years. I've come to every town meeting. I've never before come up to the mic to comment on any motion, this is the first time. And I never thought that this would be the subject that I would talk about for the first time at a town meeting. This is the sort of symbolic dispute I usually like to stay 100 miles away from, but I felt that I should say something, a couple people have asked me, because technically, I'm a historian, I have a PhD in early American history. And I'm a little different from some historians in that I really love our history, I love American history, I love New England, it's part of why I really love living here in central Massachusetts, because of the history that's all around us. And I wouldn't want to, that's part of why I don't want to move anywhere else. And when I think about the things in our history that I'm really proud of and that I think everyone here can be really proud of, the Revolution, the Minutemen, the abolition movement, the suffrage movement, the Civil War, all of these points where Massachusetts led this country, those things unfortunately aren't represented in this flag that we currently have. And no offense to the folks who designed that flag in the 1890s, but what they thought was that the thing that should be most celebrated in Massachusetts history was beating the Indians. And, you know, I know that people here have a lot of different views and a lot of different perspectives, and I totally respect that, but I actually don't think there's anyone in this auditorium here tonight who thinks that the number one thing they're most proud of, and that's most inspiring about Massachusetts history, is beating the Indians. And I think there are so many much better things that we could celebrate and put forward that could represent who we are and what we stand for. And I don't want to take too long, but I'd just like to briefly tell a little story that if you've been to the State House in Beacon Hill, in the atrium, they have all the flags of all the different towns of Massachusetts hanging there. And most of them, I couldn't even tell you what they look like, you know, they kind of blend together. But there's one that really stood out to me, and that struck me, and I've always remembered, and it's the flag of the town of Acton, and it's a Minuteman, and above him is the slogan, "I haven't a man who is afraid to go." And that struck me, and I looked it up, and what it is, it's from the Battle of Lexington and Concord, when the different towns militias had to come together to try to stop the British regulars as they were advancing up to Concord. And the captain from Concord had to turn to the captain from Acton and say, "Are you and your men prepared to join us in this fight, even though people may get killed, it may start a battle, it may start a war?" And the captain from Acton said, "I haven't a man who is afraid to go." And I might be old-fashioned, but that speaks to me. That speaks to me, that's about courage and sacrifice and unity. And I personally still believe in those things, and I just want to ask, why can't the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have a flag that speaks to people like that, that represents something all of us can believe in? And I don't know what's going to happen with this commission, I can't prognosticate, you know, who knows if they'll ever even finish their work? But I personally just hope that maybe at the end of this process, we end up with something that speaks to all of us today, and that we can point to and say, "That's..."
Hi, I'm Sam Biagetti, twenty-seven Prospect Street, and some of you here may know me, I've lived here about seven years, I've come to every town meeting, I've never before come up to the mic to comment on any motion, this is the first time, and I never thought that this would be the subject that I would talk about for the first time at a town meeting. This is the sort of symbolic dispute I usually like to stay a hundred miles away from, but I felt that I should say something, a couple people have asked me, because technically, I'm a historian, I have a PhD in early American history, and I'm a little different from some historians in that I really love our history, I love American history, I love New England, it's part of why I really love living here in central Massachusetts, because of the history that's all around us, and I wouldn't want to, that's part of why I don't want to move anywhere else. And when I think about the things in our history that I'm really proud of, and that I think everyone here can be really proud of, the Revolution, the Minutemen, the abolition movement, the suffrage movement, the Civil War, all of these points where Massachusetts led this country, those things unfortunately aren't represented in this flag that we currently have, and no offense to the folks who designed that flag in the eighteen nineties, but what they thought was that the thing that should be most celebrated in Amer, in Massachusetts' history was beating the Indians. And, you know, I know that people here have a lot of different views and a lot of different perspectives, and I totally respect that, but I actually don't think there's anyone in this auditorium here tonight who thinks that the number-one thing they're most proud of, and that's most inspiring about Massachusetts' history, is beating the Indians. And I think there are so many much better things that we could celebrate and put forward that could represent who we are and what we stand for, and I don't want to take too long, but I'd just like to briefly tell a little story, that if you've been to the State House in Beacon Hill, in the atrium, they have all the flags of all the different towns of Massachusetts hanging there, and most of them, I couldn't even tell you what they look like, you, you know, they kind of blend together, but there's one that really stood out to me, and that struck me, and I've always remembered, and it's the flag of the town of Acton, and it's a Minuteman, and above him is the slogan, "I haven't a man who is afraid to go." And that struck me, and I looked it up, and what it is, it's from the Battle of Lexington and Concord, when the different towns militias had to come together to try to stop the British regulars as they were advancing up to Concord, and the captain from Concord had to turn to the captain from Acton and say, "Are you and your men prepared to join us in this fight, even though people may get killed, it may start a battle, it may start a war?" And the captain from Acton said, "I haven't a man who is afraid to go." And I might be old-fashioned, but that speaks to me. That speaks to me, that's about courage and sacrifice and unity, and I personally still believe in those things, and I just want to ask, why can't the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have a flag that speaks to people like that, that represents something all of us can believe in? And I don't know what's going to happen with this commission, I can't prognosticate, you know, who knows if they'll ever even finish their work? But I personally just hope that maybe at the end of this process, we end up with something that speaks to all of us today, and that we can point to and say, that's who we are, that's what we stand for. So personally, I'm on the side of that hope, and that's why I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else to be said? Anyone else? All right, those that are in favor of passing this resolution, please give a show of hands. Those that are not in favor of passing this resolution, give a show of hands. Let's do it one more time. It's very close. Yep, over here. Okay, again, those that are in favor, please raise your hand. Those that are not in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, boy. Tellers, please come forward, I can't guarantee this vote, so we're going to do it by ballot, and you can list your name, I'm not satisfied with the vote. Again, we'll come down this aisle, if you have a bracelet, please show your tellers so they can give you a ballot.
I should, but I don't. I'm on it at night when I sleep. Ethan, thank you for pointing that out. I got flustered when. What's your favorite?
I want to see how you vote.
Takes, oh my God, I'm stepping rubber bands here. Yes, they all care. I just pulled the big one from the basement, and Paul went downstairs, Paul Stumpf went downstairs with me, and we were going through some of the old stuff, and I took that one and I brought it upstairs. I want to get out of the townhouse, the old ballot box. There's a wooden thing.
It's got a bell on it, it has the numbers and rings, yeah.
Yeah, I want that. I want that one in my office. Because I have so much.
I used to tell Sheila, I says, it's just not the same, you walk into votes, I go ding, and that kind of thing.
Okay. I'd like to thank the tellers tonight for their, their service. The, okay, the results are, thirty-two votes yes, forty-three votes no, the motion does not carry. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting till June. Ron, second, Anne, okay, Ron, Ryle, and Anne, Adams. All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Good night, folks, thank you very much for your patience.